This meeting is the Council of Public Schools Board of Education now called to order. It will be led by one of our student reps, the President Lee.
Good evening. Good evening. To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Thank you. I am Ryan Williams and I am the Vice President. Due to current bereavement, our president will not be here tonight. So those of you who want to reach out in the audience or in the community who want to reach out to him, please do so.
Good evening. Yolanda Smith, Secretary for the Board.
Eddie Robinson, Treasurer.
Fernand Chad, Trustee.
Michael Paul, Board of Trustees.
Wanda Cook Robinson, Superintendent.
Debbie Truss, Social Superintendent, President and Secretary.
David Turner, Associate Superintendent of Human Resources and Labor Relations.
Wanda Wood, Social Superintendent for Instruction.
And taking minutes tonight will be Mr. Cole Christian handling all our video presentations. He is part of Anderson. And then for our audio, we have Mr. Art Ford in the back of the room, Ms. Lisa Hawkins in the hallway of the fifth promo's will be doing the audio.
And Mr. President also, I'd like to say a special thank you to the city of Southfield, particularly my partner over there, Jim Shuret. For the last two board meetings, the city of Southfield has come over and did the videotape for our program. And we want to say a sincere thank you to them and the mayor and city council as well.
Thank you. With that, we'll start off our staff student recognition. Ms. Shannon Stottermeyer, I didn't put your name.
No, you didn't.
Thank you. Of Southfield High School won the WDIV award of $500, and she is here tonight to show her video.
If you know someone who suffered or is suffering from bullying, help them visit them going down the wrong path. Become a friend and join us to help stop bullying.
Well, I made that video this summer for a contest for WDIV, and I just wanted to make sure that I got some message out of not bullying and I knew that if people were able to represent us, that feels well and what I wanted to do.
Ms. Stottermeyer, did you bring anyone with you tonight?
Yeah, I brought my family.
Can you please stand back? Second of our staff's student recognition will go to staff now. Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson was invited to attend the Women in Leadership Conference due to her being named Superintendent of the Year. Of course, all expenses will be paid by American Association of School Administrators. The conference will be held October 25th through 26th. Congratulations.
Yes.
Again, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has been invited to attend the District Administration Leadership Institute, November 6th through the 9th, 2013, due to her outstanding accomplishments. One round of applause. We will now move into a report of student board representative, Ms. Kennedy Armstrong from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Your question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kennedy Armstrong, and I am a student board member from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. What does the first day of school look like for your students? If your student attends Southfield Regional Academic Campus, then he or she attended a college day, listened to career-based presentations, and spent long-term academic hours. September 11th, 2013, was the day of our first success lecture series at Southfield Regional Academic Campus. The presentation by the "My Journey, Take No" or "Don't Take No Point Answer" was a powerful push to keep our students focused on their future, faithful to their future, and fearless about their future. This series is an extension of our Junior Mesb chapter and is sponsored by our administrators, parents, and STEM teachers, Mr. Solomon. Have you ever heard the expression, "It never hurts to ask"? On September 23rd, Mr. Constant announced that the grant from the Kiwanis Club of Detroit regarding the Books for Kids Program asking for 500 books was approved for 1,000 books. The Mackinac Center for Public Policy has officially approved Mr. Constant to increase the number of Southfield Regional Academic Campus students attending the debate workshops in Livonia from four to eight students. Yes, you heard correctly. September 30th was our debate team's first field trip to Burt's Manor. When you miss a little history, it's an opportunity to write, the end result enhances the journey. This described a field trip Ms. Moore organized on October 2nd for students to see D. Daniels' production, "The Butler." Michigan First Credit Union conducted training sessions in September, and our student grant held its grand reopening October 7th. As one of the newly trained students, I'm prepared to help you tend to your venue. Today, Michigan State, Morehouse, ITP Tech, Livingston College, Ferris State University of Michigan, Baker College, Central Michigan, and Open Community Colleges have made large and small group presentations to our students. October 2013 through April 2014, Michigan Works is delivering four interactive presentations to all students to make them better equipped for search and apply for employment. I want to take this opportunity to invite everyone to our college fair at Southfield Regional Academic Campus tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. As of today, 55 colleges, universities, and programs have made a commitment to attend our fair. I also want to mention that a big discussion or problem that's been going on with our students is school lunch. That's factory. So I thought it was up there in there. Thank you for your time.
She will be followed by David Cole, Southfield High School.
Hello, the Board of Education Superintendent, administrators, and community members. My name is David Cole, and here is the Southfield Blue Jays report. Our Blue Jays football team is heading into the final third of the regular season on fire playing five straight games in a row. The Blue Jays defeated Oakford and Frampton Hills Hurricanes during this current streak. Both teams were undefeated before playing Southfield. Our football team will host Rochester Adams and Southfield Lakers during the next two weeks, looking to obtain our first league title since 2004. Don't forget our Lady Jays volleyball team, who is currently playing head of the park in the field house right now. The volleyball team will conclude the week traveling to Linnis Park and Oakford in the next two days. The Lady Jays golf team concluded their season finishing 10th out of 30 at the Open Athletic Association Golf Championship. We don't just play sports at Southfield. Our award-winning band traveled to Cleveland, Ohio for a competition at Shaw High School. Also, the band will perform at the MSDOA competition in Royal Oak tomorrow, October 9th. The Blue Jays marching band will conclude the month of October with a trip to Washington, DC to perform at Howard University for their homecoming on October 26th. Finally, Southfield will administer the MEEF plans and PFT next week, October 16th, and will follow that day of testing with the college fair in the field house on October 17th. We look to add to our $8.6 million in scholarships and 93% college investment slash commitment from the class of 2013. I would like to thank you again for giving me this wonderful opportunity to represent my school to the Board of Education, let us know Southfield, for the Blue Jays tour.
Mr. Gregory Cunningham, University High School Academy.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, I'd like to start off with my staff at University High School. Our school has received a top-to-bottom ranking of 98 out of all the schools in Michigan. It is the highest ranking of all the schools in Oakland County, and it is one of seven schools, high schools that are in 98 or 99% on rankings. Also, some congratulations to our AP Scholars 2013, Gregory Cunningham, Simon Garrett, Nolan Madison, Sinead Swaby, and Jennifer Wardell. And also, we've had two school events so far this year, and they're called First Friday of the Year, of, at the U, because every year we have, every First Friday of the month we have an event. So, for September 13th, that was the First Friday of September, we had the Icebreaker Dance. October 4th, which was last Friday, we had the Slash Party slash Open Gym. And then, November 1st, First Friday of November, we have the High School Locking. Our Red Cancer, Pink Outbound fundraiser will take place October 22nd, on Thursday. And then this weekend's Spirit Week. So, tomorrow is Social Weeks Day for Jewish Children. Thursday is Hymn, and Friday is College Day, we give a round of college chants. And we finally do the open house for U Press and UHSA this Thursday, November 7th, at 16:00. In the application window, sort of register for U Press, U Press, U Press, here from November 4th, through 15th, and it takes two weeks, two weeks to turn in the application. Thank you for listening. A great day.
Next to me is Savannah Green, from Southfield Laker High School.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, the month of September was spent taking the math tests for all night school that's greatest, we tested in math, reading, and science. On Saturday, September 28th, 90 major students took the Princeton Review APD practice test. The scores back strategy session will be on October 10th, from 3:30 to 5:00. Spirit Week was September 30th to October 4th. Our homecoming dance was September, I'm sorry, Saturday, October 6th, and we helped over 500 students. Tuesday, October 15th, students from the animation and acting classes will be performing short one-act plays for the students of Buffy. This is on the following themes, good hygiene, sharing, eating healthy, and other important lessons students need to know. Tomorrow, October 9th, at 3:30, the SFL marching band will be attending the MSDOA festival and be playing there too. Also, the Medical and Natural Resources Academy were given scholarships to four students to attend the pharmaceutical camp at University of Toledo. Students stayed on campus for four days learning about all aspects of medicine. Students like Tara Stewart, William Davies, Maya Barber, and Veronica Wiggum were allowed to job shuttle pharmacists, doctors, and nurses at the University of Toledo's Medicine Center. Our students experienced state on the art 3D MRI and participated in labs and college classes. It was a great summer for medical academics.
Let's just give one more round of applause to all of our faculty.
I'm compelled to just say how impressed I am with each of your reports this evening. Not only were they informative and concise, but they were also energetic and alive, and I just appreciate that.
Our students will be followed by a report of the Superintendent and Academy.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by asking everyone to bring their attention over to the drawings here on the wall. The art room, I'm sorry, the artwork in the room this evening is from the University High School Academy, and the teacher is dueling for Gassy. And we want to thank them for lending their beautiful sketches to our board this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Darryl Joyce and Ms. Mika Grayden up to the podium. We want to talk a little bit about our millage. While Ms. Darryl Joyce is coming to the podium, I'd like to ask all the folks in the room who are on the millage committee to stand up. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've said it before, but I see the new faces. My name is Darryl B. Joyce Senior, and I've been a resident of Southfield, I don't know if you're on the mic.
You gotta be on the mic so they can hear you.
Okay. I've been a resident of Southfield for 25 years, and a, and a, I've helped in the schools for 25 years as a, as a, as a support to, to the high schools, a support to the elementary schools, and one particular elementary school is Allen. I've been there supporting them and being a volunteer for 25 years, had six children at the Allen Elementary School. But what's so awesome is the other day I pulled out a form, and I was looking at it, and it, it had a date of 1990 on it, where one of my children had a learning disability, and some learning problems, and it was Pamela Barnes' name on it. So, I just want to know that that was a time that was a challenge for, for me, because that was a child who, who wasn't catching on and grasping the education she needed. And they helped. They helped it to the point where she was one of the five kids that graduated from Southfield High School, okay, and she went to college, okay? And out of those five, four of them graduated from Southfield High School with over 3.5. So I think I know. One of the reasons why I'm so, so enthused and so, have such a fire for Southfield Public Schools, because this is an awesome school system that really is providing a great education for our children. I know that. With five kids that graduate, and one of just started Western Michigan, and he's, his, his, his major is aerospace engineering and mechanical engineering. That's pretty impressive. You know, there's no such thing as the perfect parent, but I think I'm doing something awesome. See, so, so that's why I'm, that's why I have a fire, and that's the reason why the Superintendent chose me to be a co-chair for the school, public school millage for this year, okay? We are really, 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 really serious about that yes vote going through as a yes vote. We don't want anything to happen, we don't want no, 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 uh, uh, changes in the school system, we don't want layoffs, we don't want the kids displaced, because even through, even though I've been here that long, I've seen some changes, but there've been great changes in the school system, and the kids have not came up short, period, at all. So I just want to share with you, I have a PowerPoint here I want to share with you, and I want to talk about it a little bit. And it says, um, it's first it says, "Promised Made, Promised Kept." Now I just wanted to let you know that promised made, promised kept, that's a very serious statement to make, but it's a very true statement. It said, "Promised Made, Promised Kept." That's a lot of intelligence, because they kept their promise. They did not change anything. As a matter of fact, they reduced the, 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 uh, operating cost for the school. So that's why I wanted to just bring that emphasis there, because some people just don't understand, all they see is a dollar and cents, and whether it's taxes or not, but they kept a promise. This school system has kept their promise, okay? It says here, "What's on the ballot?" The Southfield Public School Board is requesting a renewed, to renew the current school operating millage rate of 17.6345 meals for six years. By law, the ballot language must state "increase," since the meals that were authorized in 2008 would expire June 30th, 2014, and the millage will revert to zero. Taxes of this millage would not increase, roll those taxes. But what we've been doing, Dr. Cook Robinson, ourselves, we've been around speaking, PTAs and all, one of the main things people want to know, first of all, is there an increase in the taxes? No, it is not. And we let them know that because they should ask that question. That's a good question to ask. But we want them to know for sure that it's not an increase, I mean, it's not a, it's not a, an increase, but it's a renewal. And so, we really put emphasis on that, and we want everybody to really understand that, because that's important, to make sure that that vote becomes a yes vote. Every district wants to have a locally voted millage in order to receive its full state school aid. This millage request represents about 50% of the school district's general fund revenue. So, so, so what is that saying? Uh, it's like, yesterday I spoke at a PTA at Burnet, and the parents are just so concerned, they want to know, well, what does that mean? Well, it means that, that's the operating, that's where the, the school operates off at. And, and if that's disrupted, it's going to cause a problem. And so, we had a lot of parents asking questions, and some of the questions we couldn't answer. We, we asked them if they, if they, if they wanted to, they could come to this meeting and tell us how we got them off with stuff. I, I don't know. I don't know, it comes down to that number stuff, I can't handle it, but come here and you can ask a question if you want to. But, yes, so, so it, it's, it's important that, that we understand that that's the operating expenses for the school system, and it has to be in place, okay? The millage once stood in two, uh, at 21.88 operating meals in 1994, and again in 1998. In 2004, it was 19.634, and in 2008, 17.6345. The district has not raised taxes since that time. Taxes have been going down. Southfield Public School has kept its promise and has not increased taxes. In a time of rising costs and severe reductions, state revenues, the Board of Education has adjusted its budget and it, and cut costs by 80 million in the last six years. In spite of this, the district continues to offer quality programs for our students. Now, I'm going to say this right quick before I end. That's the reason why I'm so, so ecstatic, because those changes, those cuts were made, but I just see now one of my children come up short, not one of them. And for all of them to have either in college, and four have, uh, have completed college, that's saying something. That is saying something. It, what it says to me is that when I first came in, that was two things I was looking for, and when I came to Southfield, good school and good service. By golly, I got it all. Thank you so much.
At this time, I'd like to bring up our art teacher, she's here, I didn't see her sitting in the back of the room there, but Ms. Bergassy, I'd like to bring her up to the podium, just to tell you a little bit about her students and the art.
Good evening.
Um, to start, thank you for acknowledging me, and most important, thank you for acknowledging my students. Um, I always start with this project, it's the grid drawing, it's a good example of how art is consistently infusing the elements of the common core, incorporating differentiated instruction. Students have their choice of four different images. On the right, you can sort of see my, the ones that they were working off of, and they, some of, two of them are average. One is quite easy, and the other is quite difficult. And depending on the student, depending on situation, some students are told which way to go, as far as picking the more difficult of them. Otherwise, I allow them to also sort of pick one that they, that they're interested in. Um, as far as the common core, it's math, they have to take a small image and grid it out, enlarge it either by doubling its size or tripling its size, and then use proper placement and proportion to recreate the photographs that they are working off of. Artistically, the elements of design, it's a design and media course, two-dimensional design, um, they need to incorporate value, the element of value, which is black, white, and all the grays in between. Um, like I said, I like to begin with this project because as a drawing technique using the grid, students surprise themselves, so a lot of my students who struggle and think, they'll say to me, "Ms. Bergassy, I'm not artistic, Ms. Bergassy, I can't draw." I teach them this technique, and not only do, they always surprise me, but they surprise themselves, so ultimately, they end up quite proud, and I'm always quite proud of them. So, thank you for letting me share and for allowing me to.
Thank you. Outstanding. Thank you. This evening, Board of Education, we have an opportunity to update, getting updates, on our strategic plan. It is time for our five-year renewal, and if you remember, back in the spring, the Board participated in a day and a half with all of the stakeholders in the community to talk about the future of this district. With us this evening is our facilitator, Mr. Mike Wodenski, and you know, Mike has been with us, well, nine years. Now, Mike, you've been with us since the beginning.
A while, yeah.
And he keeps us honest. Not only does he facilitate and lead this effort, but when he comes and he sits down with Linda, the cabinet, and myself, the first thing Mike will say to us is, "Show me the data. Here's the strategic plan, here are your outcomes, show me the data." And then he sits back and he doesn't move until the data comes on the table. So he's been very good for keeping us honest, keeping us straight, and keeping us on track. And he's here this evening to update us in our renewal process. Here we are.
Okay, thank you, Board of Education members, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, staff, members of public. Speaking of updates, just to let you know, in case you're wondering, Austin Jackson finally got a hit, Tigers League five and four. So, adversity, you know? Um, let me make a couple of comments about our process, because, you know, and you've mentioned I've been here a while. I've worked with probably over a hundred school districts in the last number of years, I won't say how many. And I, I think we have one of the best strategic plans I think I've ever seen, and for a number of reasons, as we're going to talk about tonight. It's a strategic plan that's really focused on students, and it's focused on classrooms, and it's focused on the one variable that we have most control of, and that is instruction, what happens in the classroom, with teachers, with kids. It's also a plan that I think is made in the best interest of students. We put students first here, and I, I want to commend you for that. The other thing is that I truly believe that there is a culture here of what we call continuous improvement. We are not satisfied with where we're at, we're continually looking at how we're going to improve, what are the next steps, how are we going to do that? No rest, and there's no excuses. I mean, if you look back over the last five years, just take a little compact picture of that, uh, we've had tremendous reduction in finance and resources, we've had declines in enrollment, I mean, this is happening across whole counties, the whole region, and we recognize that. But, and, and the other reason I think I love coming here is because nobody sits around going all, oh, woe is us. It's like, well, what's the task, what are we going to do, how are we going to move forward? And I want to commend you for that, and I want to commend the staff. After we had the public come in, we had representatives of all stakeholders, as, as Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson mentioned, we also did focus group interviews. We had an accreditation visit, external review by, from Advanced Ed, or Central, where we had an external team come in and look at the district, and their recommendation is that accreditation has stands, and this is a strong district, and the data is there. And part of that also, accreditation visit, also gave us an external point of view, and we took all of that into account. And over the last few months, we've had, we call it "fourteen," consisting of, led by Dr. Linda Wood, and that includes principals, teachers, and, and members of staff, and they have reviewed all of that data. And if you remember that day we had last spring, was it spring or was it, I was knowing that day, but it was probably spring, yeah. We looked at all the issues, the external threats, the changes in our, in our demographics, and all of those things, and we, we looked also at our data, mostly not only achievement data, but also data from how our systems work. And we've come up with a, a, a number of plans, and so I want to review that for you this, this evening, and then we'll talk about the next steps. This, by the way, is just a preliminary to a document by the Board, and we'll talk This, by the way, is just a preliminary to adoption by the Board, and we'll talk about the fact that there will need to be a study session, and there'll be, need to be more discussion, because what I'm going to ask you to do eventually is to adopt this plan as both policy and policy intent. And that's really important, because it talks about what we're going to do over the next five years, uh, one quarter at a time. So, our mission remains unchanged. Uh, that's, that's a basic decision about the fact that it's a very strong mission, and it talks about cultivating and continuously improving collaborative stage support, high-quality students and learning experience. And what we're all about is, is really seeing all, all students, all learners, all young people, growing to their maximum potential in a society that is changing very quickly, very fast. We live in a global society, we know that. We know all the changes that have occurred in Michigan, in southeastern Michigan, we're well aware of that. And again, there's no excuses, we're moving ahead. So, our mission remains unchanged. Uh, just to review, these are the goals in our current plan that will be replaced by a new set of goals, and what you're going to notice is that, uh, these goals are, are still in place, they're still the fabric, the, the main part of what we do. But what you're going to notice is that our goals and objectives will become a little bit more precise, uh, to enable students to successfully interact, to improve student achievement, to cultivate often in learning experiences, to facilitate and strengthen partnerships, and, and certainly, I'm going to count on the last one, uh, you know, when you pick up the paper and you read that somewhere around ten percent of the school districts in the state of Michigan are in deficit, and you realize how well this district has been managed over the last five years, that's just a clear observation for someone who's an outsider, uh, that, uh, what you've been able to do is not only maintain program, adjust, monitor and adjust programming, but you've been able to stay physically sound and responsible. And that, of course, is something that is extremely important. You're not in the news for that, as some places are, so, hey, Debbie's smiling over there, she's happy about that concept. So, we have eight goals, and I'll start with the first one. And again, this is directly student-centered, because what it says, as a strategic goal, is that we want to expand and restructure job embedded professional development. Now, that's an interesting term, job embedded, because what it says for staff is that it, it's not just about going to a workshop or to a conference, we need to have what we call a learning organization that is continually looking at how to make what we do better, our, our whole processes. And of course, one of those processes is around curriculum, instruction, and assessments. So, when you look at the strategic objective, it gets more precise, it says, first of all, we're going to review the research and look at those standards that are out there that say, this is what a good professional development program is about. Now, just to contrast this for just a moment, if you think about business and industry, and the amount of time they devote to, uh, training their employees and bringing their employees up to speed, new ideas, new processes, and so forth, uh, we realize we have to, we have some catching up to do. And so, we're going to look at that and look at what those standards are. The second objective talks about creating really, through that job embedded professional development program, a more collaborative environment. If any of you have ever visited the Ford 150 Rouge plant that, uh, went to a Southfield Village tour, one of these you notice is that production now, and I worked in an automobile plant a hundred years ago, uh, people work in teams now, they work together, they work collaboratively, because you get synergy from working together. And so, that is one of our objectives as well. So, that is goal number one. Goal number two, talks about instruction. This is the thing that we have most control over. We don't have control over who comes to school, what kind of, uh, background they come from, where they come from, but this is the one thing that we have control over, it's called instruction, instructional delivery. And we want to provide what we call instructional protocols and programs to increase student engagement, student achievement. There's a ton of research on this now, we now know what, there are certain things that if you do them and you, and you're able to do them collectively, it has an impact on student learning, and we want to move more in that direction. The objective is to define those protocols. Protocols are a procedure that we would use, and use that current research to implement those protocols within the, our evaluation procedures. As you know, state of Michigan now requires these new evaluation procedures for all, all staff, teachers, administrators, principals, superintendents, all staff at all levels. We want to make sure that we're doing those things. One example, just to give you a clear understanding where we're going with this one, the research says that if you have a clear learning objective for every lesson that you, you teach, and students understand what it is they're going to learn with that lesson, that that has an impact on student learning, and so we want to move more in that direction and make sure that that happens. Technology, this is something that's amazing, if you think about it. Have any of you seen the ads where, 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 where they have, they show Dick Tracy talking to, talking to his wrist radio, and, I mean, it's just amazing, the technology that's going on, and the devices that everybody has and carries around, gave me the ability to tell you the baseball score, okay? Anyway, uh, we want to make sure we integrate the use of that technology to support traditional assessment goals to building and district level. And what that means is, when we get to the objective, we want to look at how we can invest in that, to use that technology for students and staff. Uh, you know, when you look at the medical profession, and you, and you now see doctors carrying around iPads, and you see, some healthcare institutions, people have those records readily available. How do we get to that point? And of course, there are cost factors here that we have to look at, but the bottom line is, the technology is there, and some of our competition is, that, that's out there, is using that effectively, so we want to talk about how we can use technology. Uh, just giving someone an iPad doesn't mean that more learning is going to take place. It's a lot deeper than that, it's a lot more complicated than that. Okay, goal number four is about, uh, monitoring and coaching. Now, there's, there's two things that happen in our classrooms now. One of them based on state law, which is the evaluation procedure, and then there's something called coaching, which means that we have the opportunity, as it says by the objective, to begin to collect instructional data, and look at the current research, and see how we're matching up with that research. And so, this is a different approach than pure evaluation, this is about collecting data, about how instruction is delivered, and how it looks, what it looks like at a grade level, at a school level, and so forth. And so, that's really what that one is about. Goal number five, we want to evaluate all new programs and initiatives, but if you'll notice, the objective says, we're going to start with current initiatives. There are a number of programs that we have, that we've had for a number of years, and the question is, are we getting something called the cost benefit analysis, out of, is, is the cost producing the benefit that we need to have? And we want to have some baseline data to, to look at how the system is improving based on that. Uh, one of the pieces of research that's out there suggests that sometimes schools and districts sometimes have, sometimes maybe two of them initiatives, and we want to know how, 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 how they're working and how that's going. Okay, we're up to number six, marketing, okay. We want to talk about how we can expand and re, and refine the market of district programs. Uh, as you sit here tonight, and you listen to the discussion about the quality of work that's done in this school district, the question then becomes, what is the public perception, and are we able to tell our story? And when you look at the objective, we want to talk about how we can plan, uh, create a plan that's positioned for districts to really, they talk about that mission and vision that we have here, that all students can be successful, that all students can take their place in a global community, that they can be successful and move on. We also want to establish what we call some specific target metrics that will describe enrollment and changes, and that, you'll, you'll notice that we talk about changes in enrollment. One of the things we're thinking is that we'd like to see those things increased. We know that, you know, the, the demographics of this area, Oakland County, southeastern Michigan are, are, are changing, and the question becomes, are there ways that we can look at, uh, the students that we might have or could have, and what would that, what would that look like? Resource allocation, that's goal number seven. Uh, there are processes that we, that we can use, but we want to evaluate their resources and how they're allocated, and are we meeting the needs of the entire system? Now, that sounds a bit philosophical, but there are tools that we can use with budgets, with allocations, to look to see what the cost of an innovation would be, and is there a way to shift dollars from one place to another? I'll give you an example. I, I do, still do review work for Advance Ed and North Central, and I visited a district in Arkansas, uh, last spring, I think it was in May, and it was really interesting to observe that they had a program they wanted to put in place, and they didn't have the money to do it. So, they began to look at some of the programs that they had currently in place, and they said, you know, "We have bought this software from this company for the last ten years, and it costs X dollars. We're not sure we need that anymore, so we're going to sunset that program, take those dollars, and move them into a new program area that we think is more important." And so, that's the kind of thing we're talking about. So, we want to review current resource allocation patterns and develop what we call cost benefit, and take a look at that. Uh, that's not an easy task, it's very difficult. Lastly, we talk about, and this is a relatively new goal, but it's about what we call leadership development. We're talking about something called succession planning, a process for all administrative and managerial positions within the district. Now, what normally happens in a lot of school districts is that when there are retirements that take place, we sometimes go out and recruit someone who comes in from another place, and sometimes you need to do that, but the question then becomes, when new persons come in, they have a tendency to say, "Let's push this program out of the way, and here's my program." There's a cost to that, uh, and, and, and we won't go into all that, but what we want to do here is we want to review the current status of all staff in those positions and establish a timeline for replacement. If we have some, some idea, and some of you are looking at each other and saying, "Well, when are you going to retire?" That's a rhetorical question, but the question is, it's going to happen someday, it may happen in three years, it may happen in five, it may happen in ten, or it may happen next year. So, we want to be prepared to have people to come in to have smooth transition, so that we're able to establish what those timelines are. And finally, we're thinking that one of the things that we can do is implement our own leadership development program in-house, so we can maintain that continuity. So, those are eight new goals, and, uh, this is not, is not, not the beginning nor the end, we're in mid-step here. Here are the next steps that we have to take, and this is for the Board to consider. Uh, we need to do some policy review, because as we said, some of these ideas may change policy, or they may change policy down the road. Everything the Board does is policy. I mean, every, every vote that you take is policy, because you're a policy-making board. We have to make assignments, and we have a core group right now that has been working for the last few years, and we're actually saying that some of these things need to be assigned to people, besides Linda Wood, uh, that we need some help with these things, because these initiatives will take us into the future. And then, finally, we, we need work plans, we call those action plans, but they're work. And the final thing is management, and, and really, it should say management and board oversight, because what we've done in the past is, we have tried to give you timely updates of where we stand, and we, we tend to focus on one or two goal areas at a time. And what normally happens is, what we're able to do is, we meet with the core team, and, and, as, as Lon has said, my first question is, "Show me the data. Uh, you've been working on this now for six months, and where's the change?" Which means, we have baselines where we started, and so, what I want to know is, what have you done with this? What, what data do you have? Now, just to give you one example of that, uh, last year, and this would be the second year, we initiated the math testing program. And so, you know, the question I had when I came in last year, I said, "Well, you got your data, but what are you doing with it? Uh, what does the data say?" And to me, that was a very successful step in the right direction, because what we're doing is we're using multiple sources of data, and who knows when the next meat test will be, right? I mean, we don't know, the legislature is still, you know, kind of talking about, you do the Common Core, what kind of testing are we going to have? But what you have here is, you have an anchor in, in, in some respects, and it's a product of your strategic planning, because we looked around and said, "Something needs to happen here, we need to have data so we can track how kids are doing, and we need to see what their gains are, or where they need work." And so, you have a program in place that, that, that's doing that, and that is, I think, what we call strategic thinking. So, with that, I know we need to, uh, you want to comment about where we need to go next, based on these steps, and we need to talk about, not specifically tonight, but what, what the Board's next steps will be.
Well, particularly for the Board, we're going to need a study session, so that the Board will have an opportunity to review all of the work that the work groups have done, and also to have input in terms of the outcomes for those strategic objectives, how does that impact policy? So, we will schedule that within the next several weeks, and then we'll go back to the work group.
Exactly. Uh, this, this, by the way, is a, a, a first draft, it's not a final draft, I emphasize that. And what we really need is, we need the Board to take on ownership of this and also look at this, and we may make some changes, we may make some adjustments, we may have more precision or less precision, it's really up to you at this point, where we go from here. And finally, we'll ask you to adopt it as both policy and policy intent over the next few months. Okay? Any questions?
Well, Mike, we'd like to thank you for your leadership in your, in this process, and we look forward to moving on with it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to share with the Board and the community information about our second annual Health and Wellness Fair. Last year was our first, and was very successful, and we'd like to do it again. This is focused primarily on our students, K through twelve, and we'll have a Wii Fit Station, we'll have health and dental screenings, we'll have flu shots, we'll have matinees shared, I'll be in that one, uh, skincare demonstrations, um, we'll have Doc Bear there for the little kids, we'll have Tom, but basically, what we want to do is focus on health for our students, and we want to start that when they're young, and to keep that going. This year, it will be at Southfield Laker, so, last year, remember, it was at Southfield High, so this year, Laker, so we'll be going back and forth, keep it even, at the two high schools on both sides of town. And we have a contest this year for the elementary, middle, and high school level, there will be a prize for the school that gets the highest percentage of students to the fair. Um, and just to let the K-8 folks know, I heard this morning that the health teachers at the high school are also giving points for dress down days, and all sorts of things, so the competition is on. And we hope we have many, many of our students there, so that we can enforce and, and teach good health and hygiene. I'd also like to bring attention to the pink bowl, as you notice when you walk in the building, and also in this room. Southfield Public Schools has joined Mayor Brenda Lawrence and her Southfield Is Going Pink campaign, and this is to bring attention to breast cancer awareness, and also, again, health and taking care of ourselves. On all of our schools in Southfield, you will find pink ribbons on the door, and you'll find them all over Southfield, everywhere you go. So, we have joined that campaign as well. Also have an exciting partnership to tell you about, and mine, perp and younger, I asked Jackie to go up to the podium. As part of the Oakland County School District, we have a partnership with the Pistons. Um, the Pistons' organization has partnered with Oakland Schools, and as you know, Oakland Schools is the intermediate school district. All of the schools in Oakland County, we're under that umbrella. So, they partnered with Oakland Schools, and through that, every school district in Oakland County will get their day with the Pistons at the Palace. Now, here in Southfield, our date will be November third, y'all get it right to Sunday, all right? November third, that's a Sunday, and we're invited down to the Palace, and every student and every employee will receive a free ticket. Families can obtain, um, tickets at a discount, and we'll have all that information going home for you, how you go online and get additional, um, tickets. And Durham, our transportation provider, said they're going to provide some buses, so we might even be able to meet at the high schools and buses go down. But in addition to that, there's even more, and Jackie's going to share that with us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think she took the fun part, but...
I think she took the fun part, Bud. Okay, so just a little basis about what the Pistons' organization is trying to do. This is a community, out of the arm of the Pistons, and they're focused on impacting the community on the courts, in the neighborhood. They want to focus on volunteerism and youth development. I'll let you know on challenge. So, the Pistons approached Oakland County School Intermediary District, and they looked at a few areas that needed some strengthening and some girding up. And those were early childhood development, which is an investment in our future, needing higher graduation rates and less crime, and you can see on the board, there is the, you can read the bullet points. There is a focus on math, in the age range of 14 to 15, poverty is an issue, and of course, kids need role models. So the interesting thing about this partnership is that they have certain Pistons players that are legends, they have Pistons players who are not only great athletes, they are great in moral character, they actually stand for something. Young men who are furthering their education and being a role model to the community. So that was very important to them, not just an athletic event. And then, they talked about working with our schools, our district, to define curriculum. So part of this program is, the Pistons are developing videos on different subjects in these areas, in math, in reading, in different academic areas, working with children, working with Oakland schools, and these videos will be available for our teachers to use in their classroom. And they are open to suggestions. That's what I love about this program. It's not just static, but they're presenting it to us, and they can help define it and shape it, and they want to know, what do we need? What do our teachers need? What do our schools need? And so as the superintendent said, game night is when all of our students, all of our teachers can go to the game on November 3rd. And at that time, there's something called a game changer. And what a game changer is, is it is an unsung hero in our schools, in all 14 of our schools. It could be a teacher, it could be a volunteer, like someone sitting here. It could be anyone who has shown leadership, commitment, and dedication, and that particular person will receive four tickets, VIP tickets, a parking pass, refreshment passes, their names will be shown and thrown, so everyone can see it, and they'll have prime seating. But in addition, all of our students, all of their, all of the teachers, administrators can go, and families can go, at a discounted rate. And they want this to continue, so after November 3rd has passed, there's going to be more. They're going to help us celebrate our Teachers of the Year, who have been nominated, and they're going to, they're interested in partnering with us for celebrity work. There's some opportunities there. And even at the health fair, we were talking to them about having one of their Pistons legends come out to our health fair on the 19th, and come and talk to our youth. So we're looking at this as a long-term partnership that has value, that can help just motivate our students and increase line. And so if you have any questions, shoot me an email, but we're really excited about it, and we know this is going to be of great benefit to our schools.
Jackie, if I could just say, I've been talking with other superintendents in the county, they are gearing up. We are first, if I'm not mistaken.
We are first, and there's a special surprise for us that night. They won't release what it is, but they have something special, because they're looking at us as a, like a prototype for this program.
We'll be the first district to have our night at the Palace. And I would like this community and this school district, we're going to pack the Palace. Let me say that again. We're going to pack the Palace. And when we go, through your PTAs at your schools, we're going to sell T-shirts, and you can see the board and myself, all have on Southfield Village Vote Yes T-shirts. We're going to sell those, we're going to wear our shirts, and Southfield is going to be in the house. Okay? Spread the word. Thank you, Jackie. The last thing that I'd like to tell you about before my cabinet shares information, I shared with the board in previous board meetings about the commission that I sit on. I sit on a national commission for Internet safety and learning for children. We meet in Washington by monthly, and it's sponsored by the Aspen Institute. They will be in the district on Monday. They would have asked to do a film on our students using the Internet and learning, and this film will preview nationally. So I'm really excited to tell the board that Southfield will be on a national platform in that video. So drop by that day, too, if you'd feel me. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my cabinet, starting with Miss Debbie Trent.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have some good news. Every year, we get a call from Standard and Coors and Moody's Industries, and they go over our finances, and then they come back with a formal rating for our bonds. And a couple months ago, I brought to you that Standard and Coors, we had a call with them, and we were able to upgrade our rating with them. So last month, we had a call from Moody's, and Moody's Industries has given us back their report, saying that they affirmed our A1 general obligation rating, and removed the negative outlook previously assigned to the rating. So we now have a positive outlook. If the A1 rating incorporates the district's large tax base located in southeast Michigan, Oakland County, our multi-year trend of material depreciation, improved financial position following the implementation of significant expenditure reductions to offset a continuous --
Could you read that again?
Yeah. Improved financial position following the implementation of significant expenditure reduction to offset a continuous trend of enrollment decline, moderate debt burden, and exposure to an underfunded cost-sharing pension system. Removal of the negative outlook is based upon the significant improvement in the district's financial position that has been achieved over the past few years as a result of sizable expenditure reductions. Our strength, our ability and willingness to make substantial expenditure reductions to significantly improve the general fund position, and our preliminary fiscal 213 results reflect a third consecutive general fund operating surplus. So this is another formal explanation that we are being prudent with our funds. Okay, and the rest of my report is in the consent agenda. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to take a step back to Debbie's report. That means that this board is doing the heavy lifting, that means this administration and superintendent is doing the heavy lifting, that means the staff, the parents and the students are doing the heavy lifting that's necessary for us to gain a most dubious statement from Coors and Moody's. It's a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of it goes unseen, so I want to thank the staff for the work that we do every day, day in and day out, mine specifically, because I'm tough. And I thank the teachers, and I thank everyone for the contributions and the sacrifices that they've made, long for the community, in terms of what it means to make sure our school district survives. For that echo as well. Off my news, labor update. We find ourselves at crossroads with our remaining bargaining unit, our FMS group, but we've enlisted the Assistant State Mediator to take us through our remaining issues, and hopefully we'll come out of that mediation session with some headway, and get to the table with a contract to finalize that process. Over the next couple of weeks, we'll be piloting a TeachScape, a program that we'll be using for our teacher evaluation process. Currently, as you all may or may not know, the Governor's Council for Educator Effectiveness has come back with a report. Legislators are reviewing that now. Our goal right now is to make sure that we remain compliant with 380-1248 and 1249, which governs our teacher evaluation and administrative evaluation. So we are doing that as we wait for their tools to be blessed by the governor and legislators, and/or changes may be done. Our staff is well aware of this, but we are doing what we must do to stay in compliance with the law. But we'll be piloting the program over the next year, as we try to mirror what the legislators are doing, and that will be in step with them. Right now, we're fine. We're going to make a few tweaks to our existing evaluation system, and get that out to the administrators real soon. I want to thank the parents, the administrators, and teachers for your understanding as we move through the beginning of the school year, finalizing, stabilizing our staffing numbers, and teachers, and clericals, and career professionals, and things like that. So we appreciate that. We've had a slight dip in our student enrollment, which of course causes us to have some changes in migrations in our staffing numbers, so I thank you for your diligence there. I'm the guy that gets to say, "No, you can't have that teacher," and "No, you can't have that clerical," but now I'm able to push some staff back in place and finalize some things and stabilize some things, so we're doing that. And the last note is that we have a closed session call. We have a consideration on item number 27 containing the consent agenda, and we'll hold out for the closed session and come back for that as well. That concludes my report.
Good evening. I first want to share with the board and the community that last Monday, we had a wonderful group of parents join us at University High School, and they learned more about the math assessment that we are beginning to administer in all of our buildings, K-12, for our students in the areas of English, mathematics, and science. And it was a very wonderful group of parents. They were engaged, they were asking great questions, and they learned about math, and then they changed gears, and we learned about the state accountability system. So I was just very pleased, and I wanted to just share and recognize those parents, because we have a huge group, and we also were able to take care of their children and serve a little food. So I say that for the next time that we have another opportunity for learning on our parents, I look forward to continually increasing that number. And as I indicated, math is being administered right now in our district, and so as parents and staff members, just be aware that, forgive me, math is over. Meat is just beginning. So as we start to move into the school year with this assessment, it's a very important assessment here in our district, and so we just want to make sure that we're mindful of ensuring that our children come to school, and they had breakfast, that they got to sleep early that night before, and that we talk to our kids, and we help to support them with that self-esteem that, yes, you will be successful, and yes, all of what you've been learning in school, you'll be able to demonstrate that successfully on this assessment. So the math, the meat assessment, will be going until the end of this month. The 24th of this month is the last day for the meat assessment. I also want to take this moment to acknowledge and to thank Benzo, and to thank the Roy testimonies, as they have supported and given money to Cranbrook for our children. And so Cranbrook, we had representatives here last spring indicating that they were going to do all that they could to support us here in Southfield, and to support us with our elementary science, and that they have been doing. This year, we will be sending all 400 of our elementary 4th graders to Cranbrook, sponsored by Benzo, and that we will also be sending every bit of 200 of our 6th graders to Cranbrook also, and that is just the beginning. They are going to be providing professional development for our teachers, they're going to be providing classes for our students, and we're going to have, we're going to have a day for Southfield at Cranbrook. And so the first day will be November 16th in the afternoon, and all of our parents and all of our students will be welcomed. So there will be flyers and announcements that will be coming forward to share that event that will occur very soon. At this time, I would also like to ask for Elise Collier, is she here? Okay. Elise Collier is going to come to the podium, and she's going to talk about our student intervention program. And, you know, I was sharing with a colleague just this morning that we've really only had about 25 full names of school, but we've been very busy. We've been extremely busy. And I will also add that even though Mr. Turner talked about the work he's doing in his department with balancing and stabilizing, I also reflect on the fact that we have been working in the Division of Instruction this entire summer, getting ready for the school year. And when you start over the summer, actually, David, we started in the spring. We started in the spring, and you know, David and I are back and forth with Debbie. We work such a great team, but we're trying to project into the future about the beginning of the school year, and we're projecting, and we don't know the families, we don't know their lives, we don't know what their intentions are, but we're doing our very best to get ready for this tremendous school year that we have planned. And so, as Mr. Turner mentioned, stabilizing, I want to say that we're doing our best to provide the best learning environment, and sometimes at the beginning of the year, we're doing just a little bit of shifting, but we are right there at the stable. And so I thank all of you for understanding that. And Ms. Collier is going to introduce to the board and the community one of our new programs, and we did a lot of work over the summer with this. And getting ready, trying to think through how to provide an opportunity for children who are making, we want them to improve their choices, and the choices that they're making. And so instead of just automatically suspending students, we wanted to provide them with an opportunity to stop and think, and give them another option before we start moving in that direction. So Elise, would you now share with the board and the community our Saturday program?
Thank you, Dr. Wood. Good evening. I am Elise Collier, the supervisor of the secondary intervention program here at Southfield Public Schools. One of the programs that Dr. Wood mentioned that I oversee is the Saturday Intervention Program. The purpose of the Saturday Intervention Program is to address the students' academic and social needs while providing a positive educational experience and a meaningful misbehavior deterrent for students that receive or have violated the school rule. Some of the infractions include absenteeism, tardiness, cell phone, electronic devices, skipping, loitering, and dress code. Students that accumulate six or more absences, oh boy, six or more absences are slated for the Saturday Intervention Program. Students that receive six or more unexcused tardies also are slated for the program. If a student used their cellular device or any electronic communication device during the course of the school year, rather than suspending them, they too are referred to the Saturday Intervention Program, as well as students that are skipping and not adhering to the district's dress code policy. There are various components to the program. Students have to enroll in a care for education course. During that course, they receive a reflection assignment, participate in team duty activities, and discuss strategies for making better choices. There are also extended learning opportunities for the students. If they are working on a particular project, an educational support in math or reading, they are able to inquire about getting that support from a certified teacher in reading and math. We also have a prescribed curriculum. Using the students' math test data, as well as their MME scores, we have a prescribed curriculum in which students engage in rigorous online lessons. Students may also choose to work independently. During that time, they can complete research papers, work on projects, and work on ACT online prep courses. Some general information about the program, the lessons are tailored to meet the individual needs of the students. We use the MME results, as well as their math results, to inform instruction. Administrators assign students to the Saturday Intervention Program. Parents and students receive a written notification. Parents must provide transportation. Students must attend the Saturday Intervention Program for two consecutive Saturdays. Students that are not in attendance will receive a three-day suspension. The Saturday School Intervention Program is held at University High School Academy from 8:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. To date, we have received from our stakeholders positive feedback, and in order to improve our system practices, just know that we will continue to monitor our student suspension rate to determine the effectiveness of the Saturday School Intervention Program. We have received positive feedback from parents, and students, and staff. This is an option in lieu of suspending students. When students have to spend time out of the classroom, they are missing valuable instructional time. Our goal is to look for continuous improvement, keep these students in school, and provide them with an option other than suspension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elise. And are there any questions at this time, or, any questions? Okay. All right. That concludes my report for this evening.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh.
Ms. Collier.
Ms. Collier?
What happens if a student, I always say, if they miss, they have to do what, when they miss the Saturday class?
If they choose to not attend, they receive a three-day out-of-school suspension. If there are extenuating circumstances, that's discussed with the building principal, known as that determination, as to whether or not a student needs to be rescheduled for the Saturday School Program.
If they continue this absenteeism, eh?
Well, it would be add. If they continue to be absent and not to come, they'll be coming to the board, because this was designed, and this is not a program that has no cost. coming to the board, because this was designed, and this is not a program that has no cost. If you remember when we came to the board, we had to put some cost there because they're certified teachers, but what this board said is that we want students learning. And so we built this program. If they choose not to come, then I'm going to assume that the behavior is persistent, and they know that it's misbehavior, and they continue to do it. If they choose that path, I'm bringing them to you, because maybe this isn't the place for it.
And the parents are going to be made aware of that?
Yes, yes. And one of the, just to elaborate on Dr. Cook Robinson's perspective, the building administrators receive a suspension report, and so we're working collaboratively with them so that some of these behaviors, we can curtail some of that. If, for example, if I see a student that comes two or three times repeatedly, then that means that I have a conference with the building principal, there's a behavior matrix in which we request a meeting with the parent, and so that we can get them involved, we can have the counselors involved, social workers if necessary. Our goal is to reduce the number of suspensions and keep students in school. And so we have kind of like a, I guess, a backup plan to kind of alleviate students from having to just go through the system and not be recognized or attending several times, so.
Thank you.
And we want to thank the board for your faith in us, and we brought this program to you, you said, "Go ahead, if it means it's good for kids," and we put the money there and the cost there, we have a supervisor, you know, monitoring it, so we're hoping that this will be of great benefit to our students. And we want to encourage every student, you know, mistakes happen, but you can come back from that, and that's what we're about.
Now, all students coming to one school, or they at all three high schools?
One school. And the numbers have been small, so that's good. Two Saturdays back-to-back is a real deterrent to behavior. Students like to keep them, but I commend the parents also, because the parents have been bringing, they have, and we've gotten a lot of time to make it for it. They're working to.
They're working too.
Tonight, we will not have a cast star report, but I'd like to...
Can I take a pardon?
I'm sorry, this is...
That's too well.
Those good scouts.
Thank you. This part of the meeting was yesterday, started approximately 9:00. I have a report here. There were 27 attendees, if you did start, and seven of them are fathers, male attendees, which is quite an improvement in our past history. April of these. There are 222 students currently enrolled and 167 on the waiting list, unfortunately dropped, and I might say that I heard tonight from Ms. Hill that there were 40 new students today, and the, well, the head start is at 9:00. The Great Start Program has over 200 students. Ms. Hill, are you here? Stand up and take a bow. So the drops were due to transportation, these parents can't get in, and to latchkey problems. The Child Adult Care Food Program, meal served, were 1,369 breakfasts, 1,601 lunches, and 1,249 snacks. The average daily attendance for September was 73.4%. Children needing vision and hearing, from the open health department, 22 of them, the open health department will be here October 7th and 14th, and the Kids Project site will be here October 10th for three-year-olds. 9% of the children need vision and hearing screens. The compliance date for vision and hearing is October the 30th, it has to be done this month. Children needing dental, Dental R Us will be here November the 10th, there are 22 children, and 9% of the children need dental. Compliance date for dental is December 14th. The curriculum night was a huge success, over 100 families attended. The muffins for moms, 123 moms participating. Very good. Head Start Awareness Day was celebrated on Wednesday, October the 2nd. The deal trip to the Peters Farm was October 3rd. The elections for parent representatives were also held on Thursday, October 3rd. The National Association for the Education of the Young Child reviewers will be here October 14th to November 1st. The portfolios will be ready for review. We have been accredited by NAYIC, NACI, for several years. I'm not sure how long, but it's really very important. The recompetition, RSP, is being completed. Submission deadline date is October 21, 2013. Plans are to submit on Thursday, October 17th. We need additional letters of support from our stakeholders, parents, staff, and parents. That's to recompete for the grant, and the reason we have to recompete is because we had deficiencies last year, which we are correcting or have corrected, and so submission deadline date is October 21, 2013. Ms. Hill and Mr. Larkins will be attending Regent High Conference in Chicago, Illinois, November 4 through 7. October 15th, Southfield Lethrop will be presenting a play at Bussing. The students will be coming. October 16 and 17, the Southfield Police will be at Bussing to present Stranger Dangers. Additional events, you can see the calendar, the Policy Council Officer Elections will be October 24th. That completes my report.
And thank you, Ms. Council, for having the report. I will kind of accuse Crossley and two care, Ms. Hill, the staff, the teachers there at Bussing, we appreciate all the fine work that you're doing. Thank you. We will now move into our action items. These are action items that require action by the board. First, I will get our consent agenda, ask for a motion to open and approve the consent agenda.
I will be opening the consent agenda.
So, board, and probably move on to the fourth. Any questions? Not on the whole.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Cat?
Yes.
In the end.
Thank you. Report 5214.
I wanted to make a specific note again that we held out the number 27 for consideration in closed session, and also I wanted to make a notice of two participle, particularly notable hires that I wanted to bring to the board's attention, invite to the microphone. We just approved both the Assistant Principal of Southfield High School and also the Athletic Director for Southfield Lethrop and the Continuum School, so I'm going to invite Ms. Sonia Jackson to the microphone, and Mr. Scott Shulker to the microphone as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Parents, staff, students, and stakeholders. As your newly appointed Assistant Principal, it is my sincere pleasure and honor to be able to assist Mr. Horn and Mr. Burton in making this one of the best school years ever. I am looking forward to working with the dedicated staff and parents to provide the best possible educational program for our students. Southfield High enjoys a rich history of academic and cultural excellence that is a direct result of the partnership between the school staff and parents, who provide a diversity of experiences for the students. I feel fortunate to have been appointed Assistant Principal at the school I worked for for the last four years. I know, and I know that we will continue to, I'm sorry, to continue to thrive and show our school pride by maintaining our commitment to providing all of our students with an exceptional educational experience and encouraging students to become active lifelong learners. And again, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you for letting me become part of Southfield Public Schools. I didn't really come with a chart of how we'll go through this and go through a process, but I can tell you the first two weeks that I've started here, I obviously hit the ground running. Everyone I've met has been friendly, been there to help me. When you've had a situation, when you walk into a position that someone is leaving from, there's some things you have to go through, some processes to get used to, everyone's been helpful. I've been through, met most of my coaches already, met most of the teams, went to the first assembly we had at the school, and for the number of students in the school, close to 1,000 students, I think we had close to 600 students involved in athletics, which is great. That says a lot about the school, says a lot about what's going on in the school when you've got that many students involved in extracurricular activities, including the band, too. We've had them all down there because we had a situation with the dress code, so I was able to meet them all my first day in regards to, Mr. Sprysec was introducing me. The coaches, I think we've got a strong coaching staff right now. I'm looking, expecting some great things out of athletics. I think we can do some improvements with the weight program and the strength and conditioning program. I want to work with Mrs. McEvans over at Southfield, work together, because I think she has some resources over there that we can use and some resources we have at Southfield Lethrop. I think we need to work together, and I think we're going to be better programs if we work together in the off-season. I think that's something that I want to bring to the table in the district right now, and I think it's something that we need, because I think we have a lot of resources between both the schools, and it's something we need to do. I looked at some of the issues we have, and I think we're going to be able to get through those. And I said, in regards to coaching, I think we're solid. I think we need some, maybe some motivation with some of our athletes. They're all student athletes. I looked at grades, I'm real impressed by the grades. I've been in various school districts, I look at some of the grades for our fall sports. I'm impressed by them. A football team that's close to 3.0 average across the board. I just did all my grade checks, so very impressed by that. Walk into a program and look at some of the fall sports and look at that, you know, as we look at students, we look at them as student athletes, and I've been very impressed by what Southfield Lethrop has to offer. And I think we're looking at some, bringing in some more sports. I'm looking at maybe bringing in a volunteer bowling coach to start off this fall, because I think we've got the need for it. I think we've got the need for it, I think we've got to give it to the students. We've got to make some decisions that are an investment for the students, and right now I've had, just in the last two weeks, probably seven or eight kids come up to me in regards to getting a bowling team together. So I said, "Go get the coach and bring me some, bring me some names, and we'll do it." So I think we can get a volunteer, and we can start them right in the league this year. So that's something I'm looking forward to right now. I just want to thank you again. I've been wanting to get into the Southfield Public Schools for over a couple of years now, and I got in, and I'm ready to go.
I was at Lincoln Park, and I was in Taylor. I taught in Taylor, in Mr. and Lincoln Park.
Okay, thank you.
Well, welcome to both of you, and look forward to working with you.
Bookboard, Mr. Vernon Berg is here as well. We didn't get a chance to welcome him to the ranks, he kind of came in. The summer months, we were busy, Mr. Vernon Berg is here as well, wanted him to have an opportunity to say hello to the board. This completes the administrative team at Southfield High School.
Good evening, all. As I've spoken to the board and many community members before, one of my biggest things is I'm a Southfield product, and I pride myself on that. I went to Thompson Middle School, I went to Adler Elementary, I went to Southfield High, and I have been back at Southfield since I graduated from University of Fenton. And I talked about it before, and my enthusiasm for Southfield High, Southfield Public Schools comes out, because when people say, "What's your dream job?" Well, it was my dream job when I was 15, when I had Mr. Mark Bolger, when I had Tim Conley, when I had Wilson Watson, and when I had Hank Mulder. Those were people that molded me, put them underneath my arm, their arms, got me involved as a seed, got me involved in sport, and I just want to give that back to our students at Southfield High School and Southfield Public Schools in general. So, thank you, it's a dream of mine, I love working with the school, board, and community.
So, is your mom here?
My mother, she also worked in the industry, so she's tired, enjoying a lifetime of Saturday.
Report number 5214, our 403B provider admissions. I ask for a motion to open and approve, report 5214.
One of the benefits that we offer our employees is a tax shelter deduction from their paychecks that then we send to their tax sheltered newity company. Our procedure in the district has been to have a company demonstrate that they have 10 employees at least before we bring them to the board for approval. At the current time, we have nine approved providers, and tonight, we actually would like to ask that we amend this report and add two vendors tonight. We'd like to add First Investors Corp. of Southfield and also Hank Group of Southfield.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Vice President Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Cat?
Yes.
Moving on to report number 5215, our video production service specialist contract award. Ask for a motion to open and approve, report 5215. Support it, and properly move this report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And our continued efforts to reduce costs, the district administration thought to outsource the video production services for the district.
It's closer to the light.
The scope of work for this contract is to provide video production services for the district that operates a cable television station and also to film videos for the district, including the board of education meetings. We had, the proposal was released in August, and we had three companies respond to the proposal. We had an administrative team review all proposals and interview all representatives from each company, and the unanimous selection of M1 Studios out of Burndale, Michigan, and the recommendation is for a two-year contract for $56,400 a year, with the option for the board at their discretion to renew an additional three years on a yearly basis. We do have representatives from M1 here to you, if you have any questions. That's Mike Madigan and Matthew Peach. Any questions?
I have one. It's the same I've had for a year or so, which is, we provide to our board meetings, I think it would be a fantastic option for folks who can't be here, who can't afford DVR, because it's very expensive, to be able to still participate in our meetings post the time that it's going on the TV. So if there was a method that they could use to allow for live streaming or archiving of them, so folks can just click and watch, is there potential for that, is my question. I would...
Evening, number one. My name is Matthew Peach, I'm the president of M1 Studios, and this is my vice president of operations, Mike Madigan. That's a very good question, and I think it's an excellent suggestion. One thing I must say, I'm really impressed with the energy and involvement of this entire meeting, the community and the board members, and I think that's a big factor of the guys' success here. And ideas like that are easy tampering with something like YouTube. Doing a live streaming, that probably wouldn't be in the budget, but archiving it off and being able to put it up online, that is definitely something we could do, and is part of the whole, absolutely.
Will we be able to provide data back to the board and superintendent as to who's watching, demographics, or any data of that nature, number of people?
We could certainly show the number of views, but as far as demographic data goes, it's probably not going to be something that's provided off of YouTube.
Any other questions?
It has to be all the open town, correct?
Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
All right, thank you.
Now, Secretary McCall for the vote.
Myself, yes. Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Poole?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
No.
Trustee Cat?
Yes.
Vice President Williams?
Yes.
If you find in your packet, there should be a listing of several, uh, of our current policies and a few new policies that were, by virtue of law and/or recommendation of other indicators from myself and/or other districts have come to our attention for your first reading. Uh, your entire packet was provided to you with all of the, uh, data in the back, but the issue of your first reading, I didn't include it here. Do you have them? If you have questions, of course, call me in my office and we will go through them painstakingly. Uh, by byline, if we need to. I, I, I will tell you, I've got a number coming next month, so, uh, right behind you. We'll have a number for your first reading, if you second reading or no, it's a first reading.
And I think Trustee Smith asked a lot of questions that helped us.
Absolutely. If you have any questions at this point, I can answer them.
Okay. Any questions, board? Thank you. Report number 5217, our first in report, a report on purchases over, over $5,000.
Yes.
And is in our, we will now move to public participation. The board recently adopted an amendment policy on public participation. Only those persons with concerns related to school matters may participate during the public participation portion of this meeting. Please note, comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speaker with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the board, or school principals, or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated. Do we have anyone in need to report? Hold this.
You need to sign a blue card for it?
Over here.
Thank you. All right. And if you would, ma'am, just state your name and address for me.
Good evening, ma'am. I'm Charlie Roy, and I have a son that's in the Southfield Public Schools. Uh, he attends Southfield Public High School, uh, Laatreau, I'm sorry. Uh, my question is, uh, my son is in the support of education, uh, with his special needs. And my question is, um, I would like to know what happened to the parent advisory committee for the special needs?
And Ms. Berg is here with us this evening. Yeah. And so, if you'd like, if you would see her after the meeting, she will share with you when they are meeting and how to get on the, um, committee and so on.
I've been on the committee.
Oh, okay.
And I've been, um, we didn't know what happened to the meeting because I've been asking and asking and asking. This is 2013. I was the one that was meeting back here in 2011, and all of a sudden, it just dropped. Nobody could give me any answers.
Okay. Well, we will get an answer for you this evening.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
We're quite welcome. We will now move to board matters. This is where board members may discuss board chairs' information with the community and the audience. Mr. Poole?
Uh, thank you. Um, good evening, board.
Good evening.
Superintendent, cabinet, parents, teachers, students, administrators. I'd like to start out by, um, first of all, extending to President Gerald Buchanan. I spoke with him yesterday, and he and I are always busy, and I could tell something was taking place in his mind. But I didn't take the time to find out what it was. I, I just wanted to get my issues addressed. We talked about some board matters. But I didn't know he was going through some, um, concerns, he's going through believing at this time. So I, I called back once I found out what was going on. I didn't get a chance to speak with him directly, so I'd like to make a public, um, extend my personal sympathy to the Buchanan family and hope that, uh, he gets back to the board as soon as possible. But tonight, I wanted to talk a little bit about what we're going through as a board in public education. And I think we all know that education, uh, is at a time where many changes are taking place. And the work of the school board leaders are becoming more challenging every day. But despite these uncertain times, we as board members must continue to lead our districts and provide a 21st century education to all of our students. And we talked about the need for the section plan, even at the board level. It's important. We talked about it tonight as, in strategic planning. However, this requires all of us to continue to grow, adapt, and embrace teaching and learning strategies that have a proven record of improving student performance. If we can demand our teachers and administrators can certify as well as continue their own personal development, I feel as paramount, as board members, we strive to do the same thing. That's why I plan to attend this year the Michigan Association of School Board Members, uh, their Fall Conference in Lansing, Michigan. And it's at that conference that we have a chance to dialogue with Governor Rick Snyder, with State Superintendent Mike Flanagan. And this year, we're certainly going to have topic and discussion on the Common Core Standards. We're also going to have a, a heart-to-heart conversation on the consolidation service. And it has a very, very impactful meaning when it comes to local board leadership, as well as other significant educational policy issues. In my last conference, and a couple of us were there, we were sitting at a workshop, a best practice workshop, Superintendent Robinson. We actually found a board out of the state of Ohio. And they were going through some of their best practices. And they talked about dual enrollment. They talked about STEM at the high school level. They talked about starting eighth grade on a high school campus. So I went up after, I said, "Hey, who are you modeling? Since Southfield Public Schools." So I said, "Okay, that's great, but you missed the fact that we offer world-class athletics, the unwinding fine arts, differentiated instruction, no national background. AP courses were accredited by the North Central Association, I think Michigan and Michigan State are, as well as advanced ed. And oh, by the way, we start STEM at the high school." Oh, yeah. That's the way we, we, we talk at that level. But we also do a lot of networking, and we talk about things that we, we go through. But it's interesting, it's interesting now that we know that we're, we're being modeled by some of the better school districts around the country. So that's why I'm attending. So with all that, on Tuesday, November 5th, don't forget, Tuesday, November 5th, 2013, the polls open at 7:00 a.m., we expect a yes vote on the Southfield Public Schools' legislative proposals. As a board member, we are, we have the responsibility of shaping the vision of our district, and we must be good stewards of our mission. We need, we need to ensure that we are current, relevant, knowledgeable, and have the experience to pave the way for the future of public education in this country. And it's our right here, right now.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Lewis?
I have nothing to say tonight.
Ms. Cat?
Uh, yes, I'd like to add to your list a very successful and great start in Head Start Program, which adds enormously to our school district's success. Uh, I wish it were larger, but we're getting there. So anyway, on Monday, I had the great honor of attending the installation of 100 people as citizens of the United States of America. And I might add, they were 100 very ecstatic people, waving their flags, speaking to me in English, wonderful, from all over the world. It was just wonderful. And I suggest you try it again next year. This is something good that Southfield does every year. Wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cat. Ms. Manigan?
Yes, just a couple of things. On November 5th, I will be voting yes, we know it, for Southfield Public Schools. And I'd be happy to tell anyone else, they're, my rationale as far as why I think it's important. I wanted to, because, and it was nice that Mike was the Allen from, from our, from our policy group. Just when we talk about community partners, I heard the word Michigan first mentioned a few times in the X-RAC, um, Student Representative Report, and so it's important that they know that we appreciate them. I heard, I heard Dinsel over the course of the evening, and maybe there were a few others, but certainly we're, we're appreciative of our, of our community partners. And then, I, I should have mentioned this under the vote yes piece, but a lot of folks will often ask, "Well, you know, there's $750 million going to schools from the lottery." And I think it's important that we disell the rumor mill as to what that really is because in fact, it's already included in the state aid, in the school aid fund. It's not anything on top of or in addition to, it's already in the, in the pot. So don't be fooled that, that dollar ticket or the $2 or whatever, you know, that it goes directly to a FPS or any other school district is already filtered down. And I believe, uh, that, that was pretty much it. Just, um, excited about looking at the, the various policies and I'll talk with you all at that meeting and, um, just appreciate how much they deserve.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. School districts across the state of Michigan each day are faced with fewer funds for important educational programs. In the face of this funding crisis, school board members often find it difficult to spend money on their own professional development and training. Trustee Poole spoke of this. On October 24th through the 27th, your board will be attending initial associations of school boards. Why? It's important to understand that public money will go further if school board members are well informed, decisions made about policy, personnel, finance, and curriculums can be expensive and time consuming. Mistakes cost time and money, resources few school districts can afford to waste. In order to set policy for a complex school system such as ours, board members must have access to the best and most current information. We are a data-driven board. As our board president has said over and over, this district is all about teaching and learning. We meet the student where they are and our teachers move them to where they need to be. So as a board member, it's imperative that you continue to seek professional development and training that helps you to be the best board member you can be. Furthermore, as I'm doing now, I'm communicating to our community that this is one of the few honor boards in the state of Michigan. Of all these boards, you can overlook today, but we are one of the few in the district or in the state. With that, I appreciate everyone who's come to us, come to this meeting tonight. I know the time is important. Appreciative of that. To the community, I say please, vote yes to allow students to continue to move onward and upward from their matriculation through college and in life in, in general. With that, future meetings, October 22nd at 6:00 p.m., we'll have student hearings. November 12th at 7:00 p.m., we have our regular board members meeting. October 19th at 11:00 to 2:00 p.m., we'll have our health prayers, we mentioned earlier. At this moment, I'll accept a motion to adjourn our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.